Reconvene the May 3 Board of Supervisor meeting. Tonight, we have a public hearing on multiple topics. And I can move forward with public hearing, VDOT Secondary Road Initiative, and see if there is anyone that wants to speak with regards to the six-year plan.
Perhaps I could give a brief introduction to make sure people understand the process, and then Assistant Residency Engineer Davison may have a couple of words. But this is a formality that every year the Board of Supervisors must, in conjunction with VDOT, conduct a public hearing for the secondary six-year plan. Again, secondary meaning this relates to secondary roads, not the primary roads. So the road root number has to start with 600 or higher. Most of this plan on a local basis is related to which unpaved roads should be allocated funding to hard-surface them. There is dedicated revenue that comes from the state for the purpose of hard-servicing unpaved roads. There's a small amount of revenue that is also available to the Board for other secondary road plans, but it's so small, it's hard to do much with it, other than apply it to these unpaved roads. Last year, the Board of Supervisors adopted the six-year plan, including Turkey Ridge Road, South Pose Road, Kaiser Run Road, another section of Kaiser Run Road, Horton Hollow Road, and Pullins Bluff Road. That consumed all of the funding available at the Board's availability for six years. Having advanced a year in that, Turkey Ridge Road is complete. South Pose Road should be complete within a month or two. And now there is capacity at the end of your six-year plan to potentially add another road. The public hearing advertisement identified several roads that may be considered by the public and alerted the public that they could be considered by the Board. At the conclusion of the public hearing, the Board could add a road to the six-year plan, or not add a road to the six-year plan, and basically press pause for a year and reconsider this next year. And I say that because the Kaiser Run Road projects, Horton Hollow Road, Pullins Bluff Road projects, they're stacked up and will require several years to complete. And whatever choice is made today relative to the end of the six-year plan, that work will not be started in design or any fashion within the next year. With that, I don't know if Mr. Davison has anything he wants to add before we invite the public, and I've asked him to unmute.
Good evening, Mr. Curry. Can you hear me well?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, you covered it very well. As you mentioned, the current plan, 50 rid, has been completed. We will be reprogramming some of the surplus funds off of that project over the end of this. South Pose Road is currently all graded out. All of the road base done has been set. We are currently letting that road settle down here for, we'll go up to next month or two, and then we plan to hard-surface the road in the June timeframe. Now, going from, again, taking the tie-ins to sound all the way toward to its connection with resticul step. As you had mentioned, we have several roads we took a look at. Each one of those would qualify as a rural rustic road, not only because of their geometric design, but also because of their vehicle count per day, which we need to have 50 vehicles per day or higher. Several of these roads, we recounted due to older accounts, but we feel pretty comfortable with the list that we have here. But that's all that I had to add. Thank you for covering that, Mr. Curry.
Thank you. Just to be clear, this was advertised, of course, with the Code of Virginia requirements and posted here in the courthouse 10 days in advance of this public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Now, we'll go back to the public hearing. If anyone has -- yes, sir. Come on, please state your name when you get to the mic. Tell us what district you're in. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm David Griffin. I live over in the Wakefield District. First, I want to thank you guys for your service. This is a thankless job, and many of us quietly appreciate the day-to-day work that you guys do. It's really important, and thank you. The public hearing notice for the six-year roadway plan for tonight lists certain sections of roadway for hard-surfacing. And what caught our eye in my family was the statement of, "and other road segments that meet minimum program requirements." So what we would first ask is that before any other road that wasn't in the public hearing notice is scheduled for hard-surfacing, that you'd let us know. And I'm sure you will, but just point, because of the way that was worded, I thought I'd raise that. We are the Griffin family. We own two houses at the very end of Raleigh Hollow Road, just past where the state maintenance ends. The paved portion of Raleigh Hollow ends where Mill Hill Road begins. The remainder of Raleigh Hollow Road is gravel. Now, it's not yet on the list, but we ask, given the opportunity, because of other roads that might be added, we want to voice our opposition to making any additional part of Raleigh Hollow Road paved. Most of the users of the unpaved roadway of Raleigh Hollow continue on a private, also unpaved road. Few of us, very few of us, have homes on the unpaved portion of Raleigh Hollow. I believe the number is eight. But really, what I also want to bring up is, as a reminder, we have a number of streams. One called Spruce Pine Run, which is a headwater stream that comes out of the park, onto our property, along with Waterfall Branch, merges with Bearwalla Creek, and that becomes Hiddlesmills Stream. These waterways, for the most part, follow Raleigh Hollow Road. In the southern portion of Mill Hill, which I believe is on the list to be paved, VDOT knows better than anybody how water and pavement don't mix well. Flooding, freezing, and water cause rapid degradation of pavement. Once you start down that path, it can get expensive. I'm hurting to hear the ridership numbers that VDOT looks at. I hope those will stay or increase before additional pavement is done. We just get concerned about all the efforts that have been made on these streams to try and return them to a better state of waterway. We've worked with the Piedmont Environmental Council to improve water quality, native trout, and improve water flows. That, we've seen, and we thank you, has been something that's been a part of the comprehensive plan for a long time, and something this Board keeps coming back to. We appreciate that. You've got to give somewhere. People've got to live. People've got to drive. They want roadways. But what we would ask, that we would respectfully ask of all of you as our elected representatives, is to move slowly in taking in small, beautiful, peaceful roads that serve us well, which make up many sections of this wonderland we all call Rappahannock County, before you turn them into urban asphalt. That's our position. We thank you so much for your service.
Thank you very much. Anyone else with regards to -- yes, me.
Hi. My name is Lori Emrick. I live on Harry Settle Road. And I had thought, too, we've been there like 18 years, to ask if there was a way for the state maintenance to be extended on the road. Currently, there's -- it's on, roughly half of the road is under state maintenance, and then it stops. We're not really clear, you know, why it was set up that way, but I went on the VDOT website today, and I saw that the road in question, Route 661, is shown to, you know, continue, basically, to where there are just a couple of private driveways, which is basically the end of Harry Settle. But it's been divided in this way, so that one part is treated one way and the other part not. So we thought, well, we'll just see if we can kind of petition to have to extend that. And I, and several of our neighbors from 28 Harry Settle, and 125 Harry Settle, that's us, and 140 Harry Settle Road, would be in favor of this. We have other neighbors who are not in favor of it, and which raise sort of a lot of questions, I think, about, to me, because I don't understand the details of how roads are managed. We weren't asking for paving or anything, just some, you know, occasional grading and stuff like that, which is what the upper half of the road gets. So that's the story. And I know my fellow Harry Settle Road person is here to talk, I think, about why they think it's a bad idea. And there's another neighbor also who agrees with him. So I wonder if, can I kind of submit this, which I got off the website, for some explanation, maybe, at some point, about like, why?
Sure.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Yes, sir.
My name is Kyle Settle. I'm actually a resident of the Hampton District, but we own property on Harry Settle Road, at 99 Harry Settle Road. Essentially, Harry Settle Road is a private access easement through two existing parcels back to the driveways of the people who are in favor of VDOT maintenance. The road itself is roughly eight foot wide in most places, and it was never meant to be a VDOT-maintained road. It's a private access easement, with property from both property owners on either side of the actual easement. So my family, and then Hank, who lives above us, are in opposition to this, because for it to become a VDOT roadway, it would have to be dedicated to VDOT, which would, you know, cause us to have to actually lose property in order to make this work for the -- thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, could I ask a point of order, of clarification?
Yes, sir.
Is it Harry Settle Lane or Harry Settle Road?
Harry Settle Road.
It's a road?
It's called a road from essentially the blacktop down to where VDOT Maintenance ends. And there's a sign there that says, "VDOT Maintenance Ends." Our plots and everything show it as a private access easement through our property, down past where Lee, I believe it's Lee Settle Lane branches off.
Okay. I just want to make a clarification. I'm sorry to interrupt.
No problem.
Let me ask you a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Do you know how wide the right-of-way is over to the property that Ms. Emrick's asking about?
I do not have that information. I have GIS data that shows our property lines, and I can dig into our plots. I just, I didn't find out about this until around 3:30 yesterday afternoon.
It's probably not important, anyway, but I --
And it also would not meet VDOT's rural rustic road designation, because the vehicle count would be less than 50, and it would not be an ideal candidate for surface treatment. I've worked for VDOT in a past position for a number of years, doing surface treatment and rural rustic road restoration. It's not meant to be that. The last point I would have would be, we have a family graveyard that is roughly three to six foot, depending, off of the roadway. So any, you know, dedication to VDOT would impact that family graveyard, and that's not something, at this point, that we're going to entertain at all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just interject that there is a process through rural additions to add not-public roads into the public road system. That's not why we're here tonight for this public hearing. But that, if the Board wanted to pursue that, we know there are a number of roads in Chester Gap, and perhaps some others. Totally different process, but the Board could consider that. It would take money to upgrade the road to state standards before it could be taken in.
We've done that in the past, but it's been many years. I think that part of money kind of dried up.
There used to be money dedicated for that purpose, and you're right, it's not there anymore. It would be local money that you would have to dedicate to increase a road to state standards before it could be taken in.
Right.
Can I just say, I have our deed, which says it's a 50-foot-wide right-of-way.
Okay. I think if you give Mr. Curry a call, we'd have a good conversation. Anyone else?
I'm Dan Mulcahy. I like, I live on Mill Hill Road, and for several years, we have considered trying to get Mill Hill Road paved. It's often the quagmire with mud. I think the VDOT has a sort of a difficult time keeping it up, windy, narrowy, water sitting in certain places in the winter time. It's often hard to get it cleaned off, and people have been stuck on the road a few times because of the weather. And we're looking to have, I've talked to a number of people on the road, not everybody on Mill Hill Road, haven't been able to contact all of them, but the majority of them do want to have the road tarred and chipped, get us up out of the mud and water. Oh, by the way, I'm Wakefield District.
Anyone else? Six-year plan? All right. Anybody on Zoom that would like to speak with regards to the VDOT six-year plan?
Indicate, so by raising your Zoom hand. And the directions to do that are on your screen.
Okay. All right. I am not seeing any hands being raised. So at this time, I will close the public hearing with regards to the VDOT six-year
So I do want to make it, make sure that all Board members are aware, you did receive an email from a resident on Mill Hill this afternoon. You may not have seen it, to your email, in opposition to hard-surfacing that road, concerned with higher speeds that come along with hard-surfacing. Also received email correspondence from a resident at the very end of, at the intersection of Long Mountain and Battle Run, opposed to hard-surfacing that section of Long Mountain for the same reasons, concerned with increased speeds approaching that T-interse, well, what mounts to a T-intersection is really a right-hand, straight-hand turn down Long Mountain.
And I did receive a correspondence as well, from a citizen that lives at the end of Raleigh Hollow, concerned that it would be involved in something to do with Mill Hill Road. So how do we move forward on this particular --
So I've provided with the meeting materials, a draft resolution that the Board can use to adopt your six-year plan and construction priority list. And it includes the roads that are already on your plan from last year, which I noted, Kaiser Run Road, first section Kaiser Run Road, second section Horton Hollow Road, which is an extension come from Lizzie Mills direction, and then Pullins Bluff Road, which is between Gid Brown and Kaiser Run. And then I've listed a two blanks. The Board could add a road segment into this resolution, based on the public hearing information you've received and the documents before you, or you could not add a road section and leave it with four roads on this list, and then you would essentially be banking those extra funds forward and consider this again next year. Happy to answer any questions. Mr. Davison's still online, and I'm sure he'd be happy to answer questions as well.
Mr. Curry, you said in your introduction that the timing on the four that have now moved to the top of the list is such that it's unlikely there will be, did I hear you correctly, that it's unlikely there would be any action taken on anything else beyond those four anytime soon?
Yes, I've put on the screen, and you may not be able to see it well.
Yep.
A schedule that shows the five roads that are currently in your plan. It includes South Pose Road, which is going to be wrapped up here. But it shows that Pullins Bluff Road is expected to be finished in FY '27. It's possible that that could pull forward one year as funding from the earlier projects. If it's not quite as much as needed, that funding will trickle down to the later project and may allow it to start a little earlier and finish a little earlier. But any road you add to the plan would have to, would start after these roads are already finished, which means you're really, design's not going to happen until funding's available, which means it's not going to happen until FY '27. That would, quite a long time between now and when that's going to happen.
If we don't contemplate any additions or changes or action as a result of this public hearing, do you need a motion to that effect, or is just not taking any action sufficient?
No, I would, I would ask for you to adopt the resolution as presented, with the number five and number six deleted, and so your plan would include only those four roads that are currently in your plan left over from last year.
Then, I don't know how everyone else is disposed to it, but I would, I would be inclined to make a motion as to what Mr. Curry just described, that we adopt the resolution as included in the packet with the exclusion of numbers five and six for this year, and just moving forward with the, with the roads that we already have in place.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I'll just say, with regards to Mill Hill, I'd really like to meet with Mr. Davidson or Mr. Nesbit and see if there's anything we can do with the road as is. It sounds like it's been regraded and re-approached multiple times. One citizen said, every time it rains heavily, all the rock that VDOT put on the road ends up on her driveway, which is not necessarily a bad thing, but she doesn't like it. So that's what I would like to do with Mill Hill, is to get together with VDOT and see if there's anything we can do moving forward, in the short term, anyway.
One benefit from gradually hard-servicing some of these other roads is that VDOT's limited of staffing and greater, can spend more time on the rest of the roads.
Right. Yeah, I would say that Long Mountain Road is in my voting district, and we've talked about it quite a bit in terms of maintenance and upkeep, and primarily the other end of Long Mountain Road. But I would like additional time to get input from interested parties, including those who live in the Battle Run area, who would also be affected one way or the other, make sure that I'm not overstepping or moving forward with something that isn't in the majority interest of my constituents. So as long as we can revisit this a year from now, that should be plenty of time to gather more information, and I believe that's a no-harm, no-foul scenario.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Roll call vote for the resolution.
Oh, sorry, roll call. Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And I also. You're welcome. The other thing I had mentioned, Mr. Curry, with regards to the roads, when we get close to actually, within like a year period of getting close to do a new road, I'd like to put up a sign that just says, "Your road is about to be paved," to give people notice if they need to come to the seven, or the six-year meeting.
Sensible.
Just so it's information out there and people aren't caught off guard.
Yep.
All right. Next.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here. Next on the public hearing is the Ordinance Amendment 30-4, motions, rules of procedure for Board of Supervisors.
Yes, Board members are aware, you discussed this at your last meeting, a recommendation from the Rules Committee to modify Rappahannock County Code, Chapter 30, Section 30-4 regarding motions, and specifically modify it as it relates to how motions to table or postpone are handled. This public hearing was noticed in the local paper, according with Code of Virginia 15-2, 1427, for two weeks preceding this public hearing. I don't know if anybody from the Rules Committee wants to add anything to the introduction, but when you're ready, you can open the public hearing.
I think that's sufficient. I'm happy to answer any questions if any should come up.
All right. I would now like to open the public hearing. Anyone that would like to speak with regards to this agenda item? Please raise your hand. Okay. We're going to Zoom?
Hope you're not offended.
Anyone in Zoom wants to raise your Zoom hand to speak with regards to this agenda
Shocking the lack of interest.
All right. I'm not seeing any. Any further discussion from the Board?
Yes, Madam Chair. I know we worked on this several different times, but I still don't think that it's exactly what I had in mind when we started, because the way it's, it's worded now in the yellow strike-through, instead of adding one additional member of the Board to the discussion of whether to postpone or table, it would take two entirely different members. And I think what we were trying to do is to make sure that it wasn't the same two individuals that would just keep making a motion to table. The way it's, the way this, the way it's written now, and I can be corrected, it looks like it would take an entirely different set of two people. Am I correct?
I guess I could defer to the county attorney, but I'd read it differently in that, once having been defeated or withdrawn, no subsequent motion to table or postpone shall be considered unless made or seconded by a member other than those who made and seconded prior motion to table or postpone. So one or the either must be different, not made and, but.
I think this could be taken that way, though, unless made or seconded by a member other than those, those being the plural, those who made and seconded a prior motion to table. So I think really with, the way it's worded, I think it could be taken that way.
The public hearing ad that I've placed on the screen identified that the proposed amendment clarifies the process the Board will follow for motions to table or postpone action, and provides an opportunity to see the full text. Anybody who would have an interest, in my mind, in this process, would note, "Come here tonight," even if you possibly changed a word or two, I think the advertisement is probably still valid, but.
The advertisement is absolutely valid. I think, you know, if the Board were advised to make a change of that sort of technical nature, I don't think it would in any way affect the validity of the advertisement. The way I'm reading this is, "Considered unless made or seconded by a member other than those who made and seconded a prior motion." So yeah, this envisions a second sec, as Mr. Curry points out, in order to, to overcome that defeat. So yeah, it does require a second sec. Someone to make the motion who was not the person who made or seconded the motion the first time, and someone to second that motion who was not the maker of or seconder. Like, what is the term, seconded here?
Probably ain't no good way to say that.
Yeah, I don't think there is. I apologize for not careful.
So is there a technical wording amendment that a Board member, county attorney, puts forward to?
If you wanted, if you wanted it to be that it only took one, and a second from amendment, it'd have to be someone who didn't vote for or second it the first time, and then a person who was, who could have been in the first round in favor of it, who could then second the motion. That would reduce it to only one member of the Board making the motion.
I believe that is the intent.
Yeah, it could be, if you just pick up one more member, you've now got three members that are opposed. They want to table this for more information or whatever, but the way I'm looking at this, it's going to take four to do it, and you may not have that.
That's right. Right now, the way you're reading it, I agree with you, that it does take four. So because of, I think the idea behind it was that, that you don't want somebody just to keep on keeping on.
Right.
And so the best way to quash that was to make it procedurally difficult to get over that hurdle, but it may be that you don't want it, because then you might be defeating your own majority. So, if that makes sense. So, you know, what I could suggest, in order to fix that, would be to say.
Maybe.
If I could make a second suggestion, maybe we should, oh dear, maybe we should table this? And get on to the next public hearing, since there's people here for that public hearing, and then come back and work out this wording, what items, other items have been discussed.
I think you can fix it by simply saying something like, "Unless made or seconded by an additional member other than either one of those who made and seconded a prior motion."
Well, I think we want a little more precision than that. I don't disagree with Ms. Smith's suggestion, because I'd like to actually chart it with Mr. Curry, Mr. Curry, before I send it back to you.
So you can't, you have had your public, you've opened your public hearing, you --
We closed it.
I believe you've closed your public hearing, which is okay. And now you can consider the action on that public hearing tonight and your next meeting.
You can.
And you can table it until that time.
I think I heard Ms. Smith make a motion to table.
I did.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Wow.
Hearing none? All those in favor?
Can we get a, if you're going to table, it'd be best to table to a date certain, or a meeting certain, or a postpone.
I'd suggest we table this until our next regularly scheduled meeting.
And then I would just, just ask to be sure that we don't, we don't need to advertise it again. Is that clear? Okay.
In order for it to be void of an issue, you'd have to do something like, it takes, you know.
Something procedurally different than what's contemplated here.
What's happened in the past, where, let's change it to amalgamated parcels for, and then just do away with it all again.
Don't remind me of that one. Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Moving to the next public hearing is the Ordinance Amendment to Chapter 151 Taxation, which is a lot of dashes. Mr. Curry?
Yes, ma'am. Your next public hearing advertised tonight for various changes to Rappahannock County Code, Chapter 151. These were advertised in newspaper twice weekly in accordance with Code of Virginia 15-2, 1427. There are four separate changes proposed in these ordinance amendments tonight, and the public hearing ad made note that the Board of Supervisors may take one or more of the identified changes, but not necessarily all the proposed changes. Now, those changes are, first, change to Section 151-61, and that is regarding the 3% retainage that vendors of food and beverage establishments who collect the food and beverage trust tax may retain, may keep, when people pay that tax at their restaurant, if they pay on time. So if, when a restaurant charges the current tax, the business holds on to that tax until their quarterly payment, and if they pay that quarterly payment on time, they can keep 3% of the collected tax. This proposed amendment would eliminate that retainage. The next section is 151-72. This was talked about a lot during your budget development. It increases the transient occupancy tax, the lodging tax, from 2% to 4%. And as you know from your budget deliberations, that additional 2% must be dedicated to tourism. And then Section 151-76 is nearly identical to Section 61, but it has to do with transient occupancy tax rather than food and beverage. So it's a 3% retainage on transient occupancy tax collected by those vendors, and it would eliminate that provision. And then lastly, Section 151-95 regarding collection fees in the cases when failure to pay fees, pay taxes results in collection process, it changes the code written amount of a fee from 25% to 20%, because that 20% is what's listed in state law. Staff is, in the treasurer's office, has been applying 20%, knowing that that was the state number, but our local code incorrectly listed 25%, and so this is an opportunity to fix that while all these other items are being addressed.
Thank you. I'd like to open the public hearing and do these in order. We'll start with 151-61, which is food and beverage retailers.
But it's all one public hearing.
It's all, okay. Okay. So we're going to do it all together. If anyone has anything they'd like to say during public hearing, please, yes, ma'am, come up and give us your name and what district.
Hi, my name is Lisa Jones. I live in Spearville in the Piedmont District. And first of all, I do also want to thank you for your service. I know it's a lot of time. I have a hard time keeping up with it just as a civilian, so. I just have a couple of comments. This is almost all involving the lodging tax and the tourist homes. On the lodging tax, I just want to say, I understand we're going to 4%. I complained about the 2%, but we're going, we're increasing it. However, all of the other Shenandoah National Park counties are 5%. That's Warren, Page, Madison, they're all at 5%. And I just think that you're going to want to spending the time to blaze it to 5%. I understand that right now it's earmarked for the tourist industry, but I don't know why we couldn't bank that and use it next year or something. So I just think it would save time to make it 5%, because I think you're going to make it 5%. The second thing is that, can we at least put some kind, we have so many tourist home applications now, it's all we do. And so can we at least put some kind of requirement that a tourist home, as part of being it being approved, that they have to comply to the dark sky lighting initiatives and have so many look at these houses? I am very concerned. I have a beautiful view shed of Mary's Rock and the surrounding countryside. I have one of the best views in the county, I'll say right now. 360 degrees. There are more lights than I have ever seen in my life. It is horrible. And so I think that's just one thing that we could do, instead of just having a smoke detector and a septic field, let's make, let's get compliance, because I'm very concerned people leave lights on if it's a tourist home. I have a little bit of concern that the tourist homes are putting a lot of development pressure on the county for greenfield construction and under the guise of affordable housing. And I just, some of this is because I'm naive and I don't know. If I convert a residential property to a tourist home, is it assessed differently? Does it get a different assessment? Is it commercial? Do we increase the value? If I have a, if I have a home that I'm getting income from half the time, so I've put an apartment in it, is it being assessed differently? Because, let's face it, if we have more of these tourist homes, we're going to have more people who need to service these tourist homes, which gives into we need more affordable housing, and I'm very concerned about the greenfield construction, that there's no incentive for people not to, the people who are converting their homes to tourist homes, are then going to complain that they can't get affordable workers to fix plumbing, to mow grass, to clean houses. So that's one question, is if a home qualifies as a tourist home, should it affect its assessment, its tax assessment? Does it now? Does anyone know? Can they tell me?
No.
Okay, that just, it's commercial. Let's face it, folks, it's commercial. And then the other.
It's all about the resale value, is the assessed value, is what they would bring an arm-length transaction within six months, and that's all that counts for the reassessment.
Okay, I'm just saying, I just think that's, we need to, we need to address it. And then the other thing is that, is, how do we, how do we enforce that a tourist tax gets paid? If I have, I mean, I, if I, you know, if I, if I open up my house to a B and B, et cetera.
Madam Chairman, can we talk about public hearing? I guess I should say, we had this issue at the school with Mr. Atkins asking questions in the public hearing, and it's not been tradition for this board to field questions during public hearing. I personally am happy to answer questions during public hearing and public comment, but it's not been our tradition to do that.
That's true.
I am very happy to answer these questions. I personally know that our Commissioner of Revenue spends a lot of time tracking down properties online and then going after them for revenue that they may have realized from their rentals. But generally, a hearing is a time for hearing and not so much for interaction. So for not answering you, it's not necessarily.
I totally understand.
That you don't know the answers.
I understand the point, but I also think the hearing is also a chance for me to address the concerns and make it public.
Correct. Absolutely.
Making it public is very important.
Okay, so that's.
It was a procedural question on my part, because I'm happy to answer, but I also, you know, at times, we have been reprimanded for speaking out of turn, and I did not want that to happen.
Yeah. Okay, so that's all I had to involve, this at all.
Thank you very much.
So much.
All good points. Anyone else on this public hearing?
Zoom.
Seeing none here in the room? Anyone on Zoom want to raise your Zoom hand and let us know if you'd like to speak? Not seeing anyone on Zoom. All right, I will close this public hearing and open it to board discussion.
Madam Chair, with regard to 151-61B and 151-76B, I first became aware of this provision that allows restaurant owners to retain 3% of, or restaurant lodging owners to retain 3% of the taxes they collect upon remittance. And it first came to light, because during the pandemic, we had a situation where we agreed to temporary forbearance of a business owner's payment of the taxes. And I thought at that time it was an odd provision, because it effectively is taking tax revenue away from the county's bottom line. Basically, it seems as an incentivization to have people pay on time. And while I get that, I know the IRS doesn't reward me for paying my taxes on time, really. And I think that was the principle I was operating under. That said, I led the charge to at least add this for public hearing, and since then, I've thought more about it and have heard from a couple of people. And while the total aggregate amount that businesses are retaining that's not permitted, the county's really not material, probably $10,000, $15,000 a year. I also recognized during the pandemic that restaurants in particular have really been hit hard. So by us repealing this, it's effectively punishing restaurants and other tourism-related business owners. And so as we go through this, I, for one, would ask that we not, that we not move forward with repealing those provisions on 151-61B and 76B, at least for the time being, until our economy is on more stable ground.
Well, if I could, I actually made that argument that we shouldn't remove this provision, because these businesses are collecting a tax for the county.
Yep.
And I'm not sure what it entails with the lodging industry, but with the retail sales, I know for a fact that the folks that were running Hattie Store at the time that this was imposed, this Mills tax, they had to buy a new cash register.
Yep.
Because a gallon of milk doesn't have the Mills tax, but a pint of milk does. So they had to have basically a fancier, fancier cash register that would differentiate between the two. And so we're basically penalizing them. We're making them buy equipment that we need them to use to collect this tax money for us. And that's why I was opposed to it to start with. This gives them back a little bit of money to help pay for that new piece of equipment that they use for us.
Obviously, as a restaurateur, I can agree with both of you. It's a very difficult time coming out of COVID, and yes, thank goodness, the weather's been nice and the numbers are increasing, but to do this now or in the future, I think is just a kick in the gut of the people working really hard to keep their businesses open and taking care of our tourists and our locals.
So there is an ordinance amendment document provided with the materials the board wanted. It includes all of the changes. And so if a board member wanted to move adoption of the ordinance amendment, you would do so noting which sections you want to omit before adoption, which it sounds like from the conversation, you may want to omit the retainage portions, which would be those edits to 151, 61, and 76 is presented in this draft before you.
I'll go ahead and put forward a motion that we adopt the amended ordinance as presented, but with the removal of the striking of the two retainage provisions under 151-61B and 151-76B.
One second.
Got a motion by Mr. Whitson, a second by Ms. Smith. Any further discussion?
I would just similarly thank restaurant owners that had reached out to me after our last meeting in regards to the retainage language, and it's clearly not a good time to try to do that. I realize it's probably less than $5,000 or so for the county coffers, and that money's definitely much better used by local businesses.
There's no further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Roll call.
Oh, go on, I forget that every time. Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And I also. All right. So we've got 72 and 95 left.
The only thing left on your agenda is your general public commentary.
All right. So we don't have to do anything with those other two, because we just have a vote?
Done.
All right. We are moving into the public comment period this evening. This is just general comment. If you have anything you'd like to say to the board, this is the time.
I have a VDOT question. Lisa, again, from Piedmont, I just have a VDOT question or suggestion. We have cattle and some of the bridges, we have a couple places on 231 where there's been bridges put in, and we had always double fenced these areas, because I have this, the only thing, the thing that keeps me up at night is the cows getting out on the road, the idea of cow, black cows at night. And I went down to fix these fences at the bridge where VDOT's put these in, and the water was literally up to my chest, because where the pedestals for the bridge are has made these like deep holes, and it's very hard for me to put a secondary, kind of this, this is a, this is a fail, this is like a second fence. So I was just wondering, is there anything we could do to, VDOT has a couple of places where I've seen overpasses where they have really nice bridges that are way easier for them to put in than they are for me to put in. So I was just wondering if there's something we could do, I don't know, is for agricultural, for bridges over agricultural overpasses that have animals confined, is there something that we could ask VDOT to do there?
Is our VDOT representative still with us, Mr. Curry?
Mr. Davison is, other word back to the same conversation you just had about public comment.
Yeah, I understand. I just, a recommendation.
Thank you very much.
I don't completely understand, but maybe you could reach out to me afterwards and explain.
If you, when you have a bridge.
Is this so cattle don't go under the bridge?
No, well, the cattle, yeah, so the creek goes under the bridge, the cattle are in the field. I have a fence there. I actually have two fences that I've been maintaining there, one upstream, and then one that was near closer to our property line there, the bridge.
Across the water.
Across the water. I go there, and it's, because, you see what I'm saying, the pedestal of the bridge, it's, it's.
Scoured.
It's scoured it out, and I go to put the post in, and I'm standing in water to my chest. It's just very hard for me to do.
And very dangerous.
And, and I'm just, I'm concerned, because my thing that keeps me up at night farming is black cows on the road.
Thank you. Anyone else on public comment?
You do have a Zoom person.
I have a Zoom person for public comment. I can't read the name, but.
Yoko.
Yes, ma'am, if you can hear us.
Yes, I can hear you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Lopovarsky in Hampton District. I have actually sent out an email to all the members of the board, plus the planning commission, Mr. Carey, Ms. Summers, about establishing some kind of, the system to take care of zoning violations. I have received just two replies saying that they received my email. Is that actually normal procedure, that they usually not usually reply, just acknowledge the receipt of the emails? That's one question I have. And it might have been too short a notice to reveal this month's agenda, I totally understand that, but it looks like there are enough interest regarding this transient housing, like the last lady who spoke of the public hearing on the taxation, and many, many other comments that I hear. I think it's about time that this board starts to concentrate and talk about openly how to deal with this transient housing in relationship to other housings in the county. And if you like, I can, I can restate what I sent you in the emails. Is that something you would like me to do?
It's probably a good idea if you go ahead and restate that.
Okay, then I will do that. After my husband, I moved to this beautiful Rappahannock County, we have attended numerous county meetings such as this in person. We were well aware of the fact that the new home was on park lane, a road with controversial zoning violations. Then, zoning and county administrator, Mr. John McCaffrey, told us that the zoning enforcement here was complaint-driven. Complaint-driven means neighbors reporting other, or reporting on other neighbors. It is not a good system. It does not bring about good neighborly relationships. Quack Lane, Washington, is where single commercial operations, zoning violations, have been a menace to the residents. a menace to the residents. Our neighbors had long complained about adverse effects of the commercial operation on a narrow private road and had even engaged in litigations. Yet the county has done nothing effective for almost 20 years. The zoning administrator has the duty and authority to enforce the zoning laws, but in reality, she cannot do much more than sending violation notices and cease and desist orders. When her orders are ignored, she has few means to carry out her duties. She needs help. Over the years, we saw many applications for special use and special exception permits come through this board and DCA. With a few exceptions, most of them are approved and granted with additional regulations and conditions. However, no checking mechanism seems to exist where these conditions are met and followed. Some are forgotten and some are laterally ignored. There are plenty of zoning violations in this county, and the government has been looking at it everywhere. The residents and neighbors are forced to file lawsuits as a last resort just to have the county enforce its own laws. This is not fair to the residents, who are adversely affected by zoning violations and unlawful activities. The local government exists to protect its residents. I understand the county codes and zoning ordinances are currently being reviewed for updates and amendments. The ordinances, codes, and regulations mean nothing if they are not followed and enforced. I would like to see this board adopt the means to periodically review the compliance of the special use and special exception permit holders to the conditions given at the time of the permit issuance. The Virginia Code, Section 15.2-2209, authorizes the local government to adopt a schedule of civil penalties for zoning violations. Please, please establish the schedule of penalties for the violations. It will also become a tool for the zoning administrator to successfully carry out her duties. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Seeing no other hands, going to close the public comment period, and I'd like to, if my board will entertain the conversation Ms. Smith began. It is very difficult for me, as chair or any of us, to listen to a citizen have questions and not be able to answer them. On the other side of the coin, we could be in for hours if we try to solve every problem that is addressed to us. So I would like to hear what others are thinking. Should we keep it the way we've got it, or is there a way to change it that makes sense and doesn't keep us here for hours and hours like ours?
I think it never hurts to be a little flexible if there are two or three or half a dozen people at the meeting, that's one thing. If there's 50 people at the meeting, that's another thing. And so, yeah, we, we have a, a regulation that we can abide by when need be, and when not needed, I don't see any harm of a little bit of interchange, but that's just a, you know, meeting by meeting call, my opinion.
Others?
I think it's dangerous to be capricious and apply different standards to different people in different circumstances at different times. I think if there's a rule, we ought to follow it, and if we want to change the rule, we ought to discuss what we want to change. I think, I agree that it's good to be responsive to people when they have questions in public comment. I absolutely 100% agree with that. But the other side of the coin is our rules say we have a half an hour for public comment, which can be increased at the discretion of the chair. We may have people that attend a meeting and see that it's scheduled for 2:00 and have a published agenda and expect their item to be done about 3:00 that show up for that and would be inconvenienced by a longer public comment period. But I think if you answer it for one person, you've got to answer it for everybody. And there's got to be a better way to deal with it. Right now, we have board discussion at the end of the meeting, which I do think is very fruitful, but I do wonder if, you know, having a few minutes at the end of public comment to, for that interaction and maybe capping it at a certain time might be a fruit for all enterprise, too.
If I could ask a question now?
Absolutely. Well, I mean, I think-
I know that we've got it, we, we, it's in our rules about the 30 minutes, but we don't have a rule that I'm aware of that we don't answer questions.
That, you're correct, that's been the tradition as long as I've been on the board.
That was kind of started about four years ago when the school board was doing similar type of public hearings. They, people would come up and ask a question, and one particular, and I brought this out last week when I wasn't here during that one budget meeting, where Mr. Atkins had asked a question to the board and nobody answered his question. Nobody even addressed the fact that he asked a question. And that's what these school boards used to operate. And then, and so the guy, the one gentleman stood up, he said, "How many teachers do you have?" He wanted to make a point about something, but he didn't know the answer to a simple question, "How many teachers do you have?" And not only did they, they didn't say, "Well, we can't answer that right now," they didn't even acknowledge the fact that he was standing in front of them and had asked them a question. So it got very heated there for a few minutes, and so then Wes Mills, who's the chairman now as well, he was a chair then, he said, and he, he had a four-year absence on the board where somebody else was, was a representative from Jackson District on the school board, but they said, "When we go to these Virginia School Board Association training sessions, they told us that we don't have to answer questions at the public hearings, that it's your time." Well, somebody cannot ask an intelligent question or make an intelligent comment if they don't have all the information, and where are they going to get that information? So if you say, "Well, write it down and submit it, we'll get back to you in a week or two," then everything gets lost in a shovel. There might have been other people there in that meeting that wanted to know the same answer or would have thought that was a nice question to be answered, but they don't have that information either, and, and then we don't know that that question ever gets answered properly. So I think we do a disservice to the community when we can answer a simple question and don't. Now, at some point in time, yes, like Mr. Parrish said, if there's 50 people, you can't have a dialogue with 50 people and get anywhere in that meeting, as we've seen by getting out of here 12:30 at night. So I think it might look arbitrary, but I think we have to address it as, you know, each independent meeting.
Well, and then I guess my other point of concern that I, that I brought up in answering Ms. Jones's question is that I, I, the only other time that I've interjected in public comment period this year, I was reprimanded and gavelled for speaking out of turn, and other board members seemed to speak out of turn, you know, at, at will.
I understand that.
And so I, I just feel like if we have a rule, it should be applied to all the board members and all the members of the public all the time. And if, and if the answer is that's a more in-depth question than we can field right now, then, then that's the answer.
Sounds like we leave it as it, as it is for now. We can continue the conversation one-on-one or-
But we don't have a rule that we've been trying to impose.
Well, we're just trying to follow the traditional way so far.
No, no, it's, I'm telling you, I've been on here for 26 years, it wasn't traditional. If somebody asked a question, we tried to answer it.
Okay.
And if the board members didn't know the answer, we would refer to the, defer to the county administrator and see if he could answer it. But sometimes you may have to say, "Get with me after the meeting and/or write it down so I know exactly what you're looking for," similar to what we do with FOIA. FOIA, they don't have to invoke the FOIA law, but you may have to want it, you know, get it in writing so that you actually answer it properly and get the information to the individual that's requested it.
Okay.
But that's not been traditional. Traditional, we, we try to, you know, do our job, represent to people and answer a question. I, I've been out there before. I mean, it may not seem like it, but I think when I had hair, I used to sit out there sometimes. And you would ask a question and they would answer it if they could, or they'd say, "Well, we'll have to get back with you on that." But I mean, to just have a hard and fast where we're not going to answer questions, it doesn't serve the community well.
So in addition to your Chapter 30, which addresses some aspects of how you handle public comment, that is 30 minutes, it can be extended. You also have your policy 820, which is the meeting agenda policy, which does include the language for the evening public comment, that the order, order business item public comment evening provides an opportunity to, meeting attendees to offer comment on any item before the board other than topics incorporated within the advertised public hearing scheduled for the same day. The board could amend that policy to anything you want. And so this may be an item that if the board wants to explore different ways to handle this section or both sections of public comment, refer the matter to the Rules Committee and have the Rules Committee suggest changes to policy 820.
Makes sense to me.
I think this is an agenda item for the June meeting.
You didn't like the idea of sending it to Rules?
It's not an agenda item this evening. You'd have to make it an addendum item. It would have to have unanimous approval.
All right. All right, further discussion in June. Anything else for this evening? Thank you very much. I will entertain a motion.
And make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second.
Thank you. Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much.